Hey, good evening and welcome. This is the September 8th, 2025 meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order 5:06. The meeting is being both audio and video recorded this evening. I would ask that everyone please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey. We'll call Samantha if you can start, please.
We'll ask one second.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
William Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Amy Delanta.
William Strother.
Carrie Jerszabski.
Heather Brown, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
Well, thank you all. I have, we have minutes for approval. Someone move for that, please.
Your approval, August 18th, 2025, executive session, meeting minutes.
Made by Amy. Second. Second by William, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. That carries four to zero.
One more, please.
I know you're.
Twenty twenty-five regular session, meeting minutes.
Motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by William, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Carries four to zero as well. Committee and subcommittee communications. Carrie, would you like to start? Good to go. Okay, William?
Um, I'll come back.
Okay.
I have nothing to report.
Can I come back now?
I mean, I, we had a, we had a very productive meeting at the Lowell Pine Valley Collaborative. So the meeting went well. I think they said this was probably the first meeting where everybody was present, like from all the, you know, Ludlow and from all the different municipalities. So they, it went well. Everybody was pleased with the presentation. We went over the budget. We talked about a few other things with respect to some of the meetings that they were going to and kind of moved some things around. They were renaming a position. We dealt with that pretty well. And I think the meeting overall went well with a group of people that were there who I think the majority of us were all new. So, and again, they said it was the first time they had everybody present.
Yeah, that never happened when I was there.
Yeah, yeah. Time, it must have been me.
Great. It must have been you. Keep it up, William.
Thank you.
Um, and I think I saw an electric school bus today. Was there an update on that?
There was a, there's a little update. I mean, they're still going back and forth.
You had one running today.
Yes.
Kids, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what I saw one. Yeah.
Okay, so, and they've offered us to come and visit and so on and so forth. I guess the drivers are more excited than they thought they were gonna be. They thought the drivers were gonna push back, so on and so forth. But they were happy with the, the drivers want to be, get involved with it and really start driving buses, so.
Excellent.
It is a far different sound when you hear them enter the.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
That's how I noticed it was by the sound.
That little, that little spaceship sound?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, William. We have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee if anyone is so inclined tonight. Seeing none, we will move right along. Okay, we have presentations tonight under superintendent's report. We have Tracy Nowick from the MASC. She's the field director to discuss our superintendent search.
Good evening. As an advance, I'm betting the end of a fold and the remaining part is a cop, so if you've heard that. Apologies. So there, I did share this already so that it's up on the screen, but I also brought paper copies so that you can all see the thing. I'm back before you this evening for the approval of the timeline. And we need to have this outlined so that we then can sort of lay out the rest of what happens from here on out. Everything from the, at the end of all of this, I will need you all to be making arrangements for your time. Back through the visits that the finalists will make, through the work of the search committee. And to also give you a little bit of information about kind of where we're at in terms of the information gathering piece. But this, as with everything I bring before you, this is under your purview. It is for the committee to make decisions and determinations about timeline, as with everything else about the search. The only thing I will say is that the pieces that can't always flex, the pieces as to whether or not I can actually come, is really kind of the only constraint that we have on that. Um, I do also just want to mention in passing, and I'm sure that you all know this already, but Samantha has been incredibly invaluable through all of this. If you want to talk about somebody who immediately answers my emails, immediately answers my questions, and is sort of, you know, on top of everything else that I know that she's responsible for, running full tilt to make sure that things are getting set up as necessary. She's been fantastic on that. So you are in, as you know, the information gathering stage. And the one ask that I have for you as school committee members of something that you can be doing at this point is that we have put together a survey. It is already posted. It is already out. Everybody has carte blanche to share that everywhere. That is an information gathering tool that we have not only for staff, also for the community, as well as for families. I did encourage the East Long Meadow High School teachers to share it with their students. That is, you know, the more the merrier, the better the input there, the more information you will have to make good decisions. So there is a link here. You'll have this electronically. That link already exists. You'll see the end is specific to the district. And, you know, again, anyone who was listening, send it home in newsletters, send it out to your neighbors, put it on your social media, all of those kinds of things. I have, as I mentioned in passing, already met with the full faculty of the East Long Meadow High School. They actually put me right into their first faculty meeting, which I very much appreciate. Currently making arrangements for me to get to the faculty meetings of the other schools. In my experience, that is a much better way of gathering input from your faculty than kind of any other. In terms of, it is something they already are attending, it's already on their schedule, they're already going to be there. It's not something where we're trying to have them stop by during lunch or any of those kinds of things. So I appreciate the collaboration with the principals and the districts on that. You see that there's a couple of things that are, that we're also still working on scheduling in terms of my meeting with central administration. Those I usually do in small groups of people, principals, similarly, meeting with student council. And also, it, those things sort of moving forward. And again, that's just sorting out who is available when and when things are already happening. So I would expect that to be something that's still being scheduled. And what I will say is the one that we have already scheduled is the Mountain View faculty, and that's on October 7th. Which is why, because that is one that is happening, and also my sense was that we were probably going to need that long to actually have all the faculty meetings happen. I'm not asking to be back in front of you for October 6th, which I know would be sort of the next available time. But actually give it that amount of time to actually give all the input and then have me back before you after that. Now, your next meeting, and this is again, one of the things that's under your purview, so for discussion. Your next meeting is actually on October 20th after that. I'm actually in Fort Worth, Texas, at the Association of School Business Administrators Conference on the 20th. Now, I can zoom in, I realized as I was driving out here, or we can have a special meeting the week before. Either way is fine. I just need to make sure that I have enough lead time from whenever the last input session is, to actually gather all of that information. As you remember from our discussion, what I'm gonna be bringing back before you is really two things. One is a recommendation in terms of your description of what exactly it is that you're looking for, for superintendent for your school district at this time. Which is based on all of the feedback that we've been gathering over this time. And the other thing I'm gonna be giving you at the same time is really a report that is anything else that I think is worth your knowing at this point, from all of the input that we've gathered at this point. And that can be, and because we're talking to families and faculty and students and the community. I've found that school committees find that to be valuable, kind of for a couple of things, in terms of not just, you know, have I just accurately described in terms of the profile what you actually need. But also things like, how do you want to make up the search committee? What questions do you want to be asking in your interview? And then also, what kinds of things do you potentially want to then be focusing on with the next superintendent moving forward? So it can be a valuable tool in terms of all of those things, which is why you get that report. Whenever it is that you then have adopted the position, we will then internally work to get the position posted. Now, I will say the second thing that I'm going to be asking you to do, walking out of this evening, is that I'm gonna be sharing with the chair and probably also with the superintendent's office, the form that we use to gather all of the other information that will also go up with your position posting. So that is a description of the district, and that's everything from sort of nice words around the district. But also, this is how many students there are, this is how many buildings there are, this is what the budget is, and those sorts of things. I will also be asking for a description of the community, which may be something that you can just sort of pull off a Chamber of Commerce website or a town website, or it may be something you want to work on. And also pictures that, I think I mentioned this when I was before you before, entice people to want to be here. Good opportunity, by the way, to use whatever drawings you have of the coming high school. By all means, show it off. So that will be going to you electronically this evening, but I wanted you to know what it was before I sent it to you. That's one where, because it comes back and before you again, I would ask you not to sort of consult internally. But if you want to sort of parse out of, you know, so and so is actually particularly good at wordsmithing, and why don't I have them work on that? By all means, do that. We'll take things piecemeal as you have them and start to put that together. Again, you'll have that in front of you that evening, whenever it is that you choose to do that. If we do it on the 20th with me remotely, or if I come before you for a specially scheduled meeting. You then have, and I'm going to say this to you, it's kind of clear on the timeline, but I also want to make sure that it's clear and public. What is going to feel like a bit of a lull, and that's because the position is posted. And we are gathering the applications internally. As you know, those applications are confidential. So the only place they're coming, at least initially, is actually to MASC to make sure they're complete, make sure they're thorough, make sure they're collated. They then confidentially get shared with the search committee for their screening process. But just so that you know, but also so the community knows, that there's going to be this period of a bit over a month where it's gonna feel a little bit like nothing is happening from kind of the public side in the district. The search committee needs to meet for training prior to them actually doing their work. They get trained in open meeting law confidentiality. They sign their confidentiality statements. They get trained in conflict of interest. They sign their conflict of interest statements if applicable. We also talk through what the process is and what their, their sort of further commitments are. That schedule, the search committee training is scheduled for November 17th. Part of what's important this evening is for us to get those dates established so that you can then get them shared. So that those who are considering, being considered and whatso, and so forth for the search committee know what the time commitment is ahead of time, because the one thing that has to be true of the search committee is that they can make all of the meetings. They have sort of a, in terms of the calendar, it's a short period of time. In terms of the commitment over that time, it's fairly, it's quite a bit. So you want to make sure that everybody can make everything, and we can do that without, so we set that up ahead of time and this far in advance. The, they get trained before the position closes because they need to actually do all of that before they can actually have the confidential applications. Applications put them on the 21st. We always close applications on a Friday, or we tend to close applications on a Friday. And then the search committee would be getting them almost immediately. We tend to try to turn right around. They'll have them that weekend to do the review on their own. They will have been thoroughly trained as to what they can and can't do with them and where they can, you know, what they, the kinds of things that they can do. And also, something that I think is actually pretty important is that, because you are the ones who create the charge for the search committee by virtue of the position that you adopt, that gets shared back with them when they're reviewing the applications. As, this is what the school committee said they were looking for, and then, please in your review, make sure that you're reviewing the applications against that description. Okay, they'll meet then on the 24th for a meeting to review the applicants and decide who it is that they're going to be bringing in for confidential executive session interviews as semifinalists. Now, we're starting to get into holiday season, so if it starts to feel like there's gaps here, it's because there's actually vacations there. So the semifinalist interviews are then after vacation and not right away that first week. Because trying to schedule people as they're just coming back from a break tends not to work in my experience. So we do it for the next week. Which is the week of the 8th through the 12th. They will do all of the interviews during that time. Interviews take place at night because you're interviewing people who tend to be doing other things during the day. And also, I try to leave a little bit of flexibility because sometimes people are driving a distance in order to be able to do it. Well, they'll complete all of them during that week. They'll deliberate after they've seen everyone and decide who it is that they want to put forward as finalists to recommend to you. December, of course, tends to be a very short month when it comes to us. So you have a meeting on December 15th. The recommendation I'd be making is that they be back in front of you to actually make their recommendations, report out to you as to who the finalists are that they'd be recommending to you. And then, of course, we immediately lose everybody again right away there. So in terms of my then being able to schedule both you all in non-quorum groups to visit the finalist districts. Which again, if you want to sort of do pre-positioning, look ahead on the calendar and start to think about what kind of availability you'll have. And also then to bring the finalists in, and I promise, Mr. Superintendent, not to bring them in immediately after school vacation because I try not to do that to any school district. That's not fair. So that they can spend a day in the district, and then for you all to interview them after that in public session, and then make your selection. I am giving us two weeks there at the beginning of January. That's partly for us to make sure that we get the visits in both directions fully scheduled. And then have you do the interviews because you want those to be informing your deliberation. And also because, end of December, beginning of January, it does tend to be a little complicated, even if we don't have complicated New England weather. So, so that is what I have in front of you this evening. As I said, I'm happy to take questions, and also this is, this is under your purview. So, you know, please, please discuss.
Tracy, so the October 20th, if, would you prefer to zoom in for that, or we also have a November 20th? Is that too late?
Um, I would be concerned, so what I'm trying to do is make sure that you have the position posted for at least a month. We try to allow for five weeks. We find that the last week doesn't, I mean, I'm gonna be blunt with you. Superintendents are wonderful people who work very hard. And somewhere between one-third and two-thirds of them will apply within the last 24 hours, regardless of how long we give them. I can answer it, but that is absolutely the case. So, um, I feel like most people feel more comfortable if there's at least a month, rather than trying to make it six weeks. If we do that, then we have to kind of bump everything back into December, and partly because we lose so much time in December. So I am okay with, I mean, really, this is up to you. I, in that particular case sense, it's going to be something where I'm gonna be sharing sort of text with you, and I will try to do it ahead of time. It's really something for you then to decide, you know, are you comfortable with having that discussion with me zooming in from Fort Worth? And my doing whatever the editing is. And then the other thing, and I know that you have a discussion before you this evening regarding this. Generally, what I would be also asking that evening is that you establish specifically the size of the search committee, specifically what the seats are on the search committee at the same time. At this, and that, that way one is potentially informing the other, is usually kind of the relationship there. I know you have some, some discussion on that already coming before you this evening. You do what, however you do it, you have to, you have to do it in a, in a, in a public session. So I, I would say that I'm okay either coming, zooming in on the 20th or trying to schedule before then. I fly out that morning, so I would anticipate that I would be settled and back on Wi-Fi by the time of your meeting.
So you'd be comfortable to, because I would.
Be comfortable.
Zoom would probably be more easier for the rest of this.
Would imagine.
Just to me, if that's okay in your schedule.
It is okay on my, on my end, absolutely. Yep. So we will add that, we'll put that in right now. That also keeps you on a, these are meetings you're already having, and you're simply adding me to the agenda, which I know can be more useful in terms of that.
In terms of the specific posting, you'll come to us with examples or a draft on how to post, and then we'll review.
Correct. So you may or may not, I don't think I brought this to you because, because I didn't actually bring copies that evening. What we prepare for every search that we do is, we're still calling it a brochure, although it tends not to actually exist on paper anymore. It tends to always only be electronic. That is, has all of this information that I'm gonna ask you to start putting together this evening, right? So here is a lovely picture of the high school building. Here's how much our budget is. Here's the makeup of the school committee. It will have the timeline in it. And it will also have in the one, you will get that all that evening. The other thing that you will then be approving that evening is the part that's coming from me as a report. Which is based on all of this feedback that we've gathered over, what is it, probably at least six weeks here. From the survey, from my meeting with the faculty, from, I've also, you know, I don't think I actually said this. I'm also proposing an input session the night of the day that I'm out at Mountain View anyway. Because it's good to have a sort of, someone is here in the district in person, please come speak to them session. If that's a conflict, by the way, for the district or anyone else, let me know. Based on all of that, here is what the priorities are that you should be establishing in your, in your description of who you're looking for. So you're looking for somebody who has, and I'm gonna just give you examples from the past. You're looking for someone who has, you know, extensive budgetary experience. You're looking for someone who has experience building a new building. You're looking for somebody who has, you know, X number of years in the classroom, those kinds of things. And that, I'll be drawing that all from all of the feedback that I've gotten. But then again, that goes to you, and that's for you as the committee to determine, you know, yes, we think this is important, no, we don't. We want to make sure there's, you know, a section in here that talks about this. That's entirely up to you, and we'll take that then back. That goes into that brochure, and then that becomes what's posted on our website and goes out to the email list and gets posted nationally, if you want me to do that. And goes up on MASs and all of the rest of it.
Tracy, the October 7th, is that their faculty meeting, or is that a different date?
I believe it is their faculty meeting, yes.
So Maple Shade and Birchland also meet the same day?
Oh, amazing.
Same time, though, so that's why, that's why I couldn't tell her that date. Yeah, so, yeah, and then thankfully.
Two, though, is Meadowbrook meets in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Makes for a long day for.
That's fine.
But Meadowbrook does their faculty meeting in the morning at 8:50?
Great.
So maybe we can get you on their agenda.
That would be amazing.
All right, so I will talk to Ms. Lodi tomorrow to see if we can get you on that agenda. And then depending on how long you're, you're going to need in each faculty meeting, roughly an hour.
The longest I will need, and these are smaller faculties, so it's not the high school. I say half an hour. It's more like 15 or 20 minutes. And part of that is depending on how quickly I can pick up all the sticky notes. Let's be blunt.
So, so the challenge would be, you can definitely get Meadowbrook in?
Yep.
And you, or you schedule at Mountain View?
Yes.
If you wanted to try to squeeze Birchland in.
Yep.
Birchland's at 2:00.
Okay.
And then you would, and so if you're there till 2:30.
Yep.
Mountain View starts their meeting at 2:30. They would have to put you on for the second half of the meeting.
Yep.
And you would go from Birchland to Mountain View. You would knock off three schools in one day.
That would be amazing.
The only group you wouldn't get is Maple Shade and hope you pick them up in November, if possible, or no?
So I mean, the only problem is that by then they will have already set the positions.
Yeah.
So maybe something we need to do is just try to have me work with Maple Shade and figure out the best way for me to still try to gather their impact.
They could do is look at flipping their department slash grade level meeting, their faculty meeting.
Okay.
And that comes usually later in the month.
Okay.
And so instead of October 7th, it might be the 14th or the 21st.
If it was, I mean, if by chance it was the 14th, that would be amazing. If it's the 21st, it's the day after they've approved something, but.
All right, let me, let me, I'll talk to Ms. Lodi tomorrow, and let me talk to Mr. Martin, who's the principal of Maple Shade, and see what they can do.
And you said Meadowbrook is at 8:45?
Get there for 8:45, starts at 8:50.
Great, fantastic. Thank you for that.
Sure. Anything I can do to help with the superintendent search.
I have a question. For the search committee members, those meetings that are in November, are those in the evening as well, or those, okay. That was important for some folks.
The assumption is always that most of your search committee is going to be, first of all, people who, who either work for the district and some of whom may even be in classrooms. Or who have other jobs outside of the district. What I will say is that part of what I try to do, once the search committee has met on the 24th and they've determined how many semifinalists they are, one of the things that I try to work with the search committee on for that interview schedule on the 8th through the 12th, is that how many people have you asked for? And then how many, how many thus hours do we need? How many sessions do we need? And do you want to see more on, you know, particular evenings, or do you want to scatter it over the week? And I put that, I give that to the search committee to determine, and that may also then depend on things like, you know, you've got somebody who's coming back from work that works 45 minutes away, and we need to make sure that we're not posting until a time that they can make it and so forth. So that's a good one to sort of say, you know, you need to have all the evenings available. And then when we get into the particularities of the decision that they've already made, what kind of flexibilities can the search committee kind of grant themselves? That's something I try to work hard with them on.
Thank you.
And also, you know, have you picked all people who are within a half hour's drive, or have you picked semifinalists who are gonna be coming from, you know, an hour and a half away? And we need to make sure that we're allowing for what they have to do, too. The nice thing is you're not running into budget season, which gets complicated with, you know, seeing superintendents and assistant superintendents and so forth, because they have other commitments.
Tracy, as we spoke about before, we are gonna discuss the screening committee after this. And you had mentioned nine was an ideal number, 11 would be okay. 13 is too many, in your opinion.
15 is really too many? I think, I mean, 13, I've had work. I, my, the reason I start to express skepticism about 13 is that usually when people are asking about 13, they really are thinking 15, so.
And in terms of the makeup, we do have one or two school committee members interested. Certainly, we would look for an administrator, perhaps. Then this is up for discussion, obviously, by the committee. Two teachers, two unit eight members. A paraprofessional, and potentially a student, making up those 11. Is there anything we are missing in that list?
Um, so I guess a couple of things. Um, so you need to, so something to discuss is whether or not you want to have a principal. That can be a valuable perspective. Something to discuss is if you, I have also had committees go both ways in terms of students, if they want to have one student or want to have two students, sometimes it can help the students if there's more than one there, up to you. Paraprofessional, I think that perspective is valuable. You may want to also think about whether or not there are other support people within the district. So do you want to open it to people who are secretaries, custodial, I don't know, your bus drivers don't work for your district. School nutrition, that sort of thing. I know that search committees in the past have found that a seat of that nature can be a useful perspective. Kind of coming at the district business from a different perspective. Up to the committee to determine whether you want someone sort of at large from the community in some perspective. And then also, there are committees that choose to have someone specifically from the town side in some fashion. That's again, up to you, and kind of how specific you then want to be, right? Those can be all useful things. Parents, or family members, guardians, however you want to put that, generally having a good balance of kind of people who literally are working for the district and, and/or have worked for the district, and people who don't can be helpful. Making sure that there's that sort of balanced understanding and things. And, is that everything? Yeah, those are, those are the most of the things that I've seen, yes. Thanks for asking.
Other questions for Tracy?
I think I got it digested.
Survey already been advertised to the.
I'm not sure. We, okay.
But what we can do is, you know, with the school committee's permission, we'll, we can send it out to families, and we can also post it on the webpage.
Yep, and the other thing I will say is that once you've approved this, putting this on the website can be very useful, too. Because the, the open question everybody has is kind of, how does this work, and when are things happening, right? And I mean, maybe you and I can then work together as we start to sketch out, like, the pieces we don't quite know yet that we can add as we go, that will be useful. But I find, yes, if you can put those two things up on the website, and then, as I said, anyone sharing in any capacity. So if principals send newsletters home, if teachers send things home, everybody's social media. I mean, when I meet with your students, one of the things I'm gonna say is please get it up on whatever social media you're on, because that's where students will pick it up.
Could we table at open houses, like with a QR, QR code or something?
Yes, I have, you would, both of my searches then would be using QR codes. I've had, yes, yep, and that'd be great.
I know Mountain View's PTL meeting is tomorrow. I don't know if we would want to.
We could send it out to them, too.
I mean, I'm, I can.
Do we have all the presidents? I don't know if I have all the president's emails. But certainly we can get it to you.
I mean, I, yes, I can go to Mountain View's tomorrow and share the information, but.
And actually, the other thing is that if you confirm, if you, if you are comfortable with the public input session being on October 7th, and the only, to the same point you were. and the only, to, to the same point you were making, my only thought was I was going to be in the district already if I just made it a day. If there is availability either in a school, in a school, or if you want me to try to do it at something like the public library, whatever you all would feel best, I'm happy to do it anywhere. Um, that's another thing that then can be shared with the PTO. If people want to come sort of in person to do it. If we've set that up already, then, then that's something that can be shared. And I can do, if I'm already in the district, I can do it anytime that I'm not already in a faculty meeting, so.
Have social media too, so they'll. This is for staff as well or just families?
It's for everyone. Yep, staff as well. And the thing I will tell staff is that, you know, if you've given me your input in another fashion, that's great, but that doesn't, like, it's not like I'm going to double check if you want to fill out the survey too, certainly.
Great. Think we're in good shape.
Okay.
You need approval of this.
I would love it if you gave me approval of this.
Okay.
With the, with the, um, the amendment that we're going to meet again on October twentieth. Um, and then you were sort of sketching in the days of the faculty meetings, um, according to what you have here. Does, I guess the only other things that, that I, the, the one thing I wanted to confirm is particularly with the school committee. Um, are you comfortable with that sort of announcement on the fifteenth? Um, which is kind of before winter break for the finalists and then we essentially the notion, the, 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 um, discussion would be, and we're scheduling for, you know, after school reopens, the visits are happening and you're doing interviews as part of the new year. Are you comfortable with that timeline? I just want to make sure that that part is most directly impacting you all.
Um, why would, is there a reason we'd be uncomfortable with it? Is it, okay, I'm comfortable with it.
No, some, I mean, some committees get very attached to, it has to be by the end of the calendar year or that kind of thing. I, and also I am, as I've, I've noted, um, trying to make sure that we leave the, I have to call up people and say, can you come on these days and what days can the district host people and that kind of thing, so.
No, I think we're comfortable.
Yes. And no one's going to do that on the twenty-third just.
I think you talked about this last meeting and just like, um, thinking about like, is there an ideal number in terms of like, uh, an applicant pool? Like if for some reason didn't have the applications that we wanted, that would delay the timeline. I'm just curious.
So, um, is there an ideal applicant pool?
I know there's a, I think there's a lot of superintendent positions that are, or several searches that.
Several searches, yeah. I, I, I mean, one of the conversations we're having in staff though is the degree to which the applicants are going to necessarily overlap. Yes, um, because, well, yes, we do have a couple of frequent flyers who kind of apply for everything that's open. Most superintendents do not. Like they're looking for a particular kind of district, a district of a particular size or that kind of thing. So, from what I've seen, I don't feel like you have a lot of straightforward competition. Or that's another reason that I might actually say, are you comfortable with the timeline? But you don't really have, from what I've seen of what's open and, and what's opening, a lot of direct competition for applicants. Um, of, you know, the, the, a person who applies here is going to be applying for, you know, ten others or six others or that kind of thing. I don't think that's actually happening. It is, I would be surprised if you don't get ten applicants or fifteen applicants, I mean, something of that nature. When I first started doing this, we used to see, you know, twenty or twenty-five, that just doesn't seem to happen anymore. Part of it may also be, um, what we're seeing across the country. I'm interested to see whether or not we have an increased number of people who might be applying to Massachusetts superintendencies. Not saying anything more. That may happen and that would be, by the way, uh, you know, it, it will be up to you when I come back to you with the position description to determine if you want me to put it on N A S S. The National Association of Superintendent Searches, I certainly can. It's not, it's, it's me sending another email is all it is. But it could very well gather, garner people who might not otherwise simply come across it.
Thoughts specifically on out of state applicants?
So.
Depends.
In my, in, in my experience, it is unusual for someone to apply for a Massachusetts superintendency. Doesn't have some degree of experience in Massachusetts education in some fashion. So they may not have been an administrator in Massachusetts, um, but they may have, they may have gotten their licensure in Massachusetts. They may have gone to college in Massachusetts. They might be here. I mean, they might like the commissioner be married to someone who got their education in Massachusetts and spend a lot of vacation time here. So it tends not to be that they're a kind of applying because it's open. They're applying because there's something that appeals about wanting to come here. Now, you may not necessarily get the same sort of, you know, I can answer all of the trivia questions about East Long Meadow that are out there. And, you know, there certainly are districts that, that want to make sure people really know their particular town. I will also say though, the, those, those applicants tend to be very well researched. I've had more than one applicant from out of state come in into an interview, um, and talk to the search committee about, you know, how their whole family came and spent Saturday there and they had lunch at such and such and they looked, you know. So they tend to do their homework, um, on that kind of thing. So, I mean, that would be what I would say. In addition to, of course, the fact that you're just so close to the state line anyway. I mean, you know, Connecticut is next door, so that, that would certainly never surprise me.
Hey, if we are okay with the timeline, I, I would entertain someone to move, uh, that, including the October twentieth, uh, date as well, please.
I moved to the proposed search timeline for the East Meadow for our, um, new superintendent search and include with these dates the October twentieth meeting that will be added.
Motion made by Amy, second by William, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero.
And I will send you a, a clean copy of this. And do I owe, do I owe anyone anything else via email?
I think, uh, we'll be contacting you tomorrow.
Give me contact about the, okay.
We'll try to get, uh, all the faculty meetings covered and, um, maybe they can reach out to you for times where you might be able to sit in the building to meet with food service staff and so.
Be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would love that. And I'm always happy to, you know, follow a custodian or with a pad of paper or whatever is necessary to make it work. Um, and we both probably also can then work out, um, when would be good to do the public input session and where. A lot of sense of what's.
So you generate a QR code for us for the survey that.
Do you gen- we, so we don't generally generate QR codes in-house, although that's partly just because it's not something we've been doing. Um, I certainly can, or, I mean, do you tend, is that something your district tends to do?
I can do that, yeah.
Happy to do it either way. Yep, okay.
We'll get the survey up on the webpage and we'll work on the QR code.
Do you want me to be? Conversation, stay up here, what would you like?
You, I don't, I don't know if it's necessary or do you want to, you certainly can.
Well, you've, you've now actually already given, given the, the times and days, which is the part that I'm most concerned about, so, yep. I'll, I'll stay and listen.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Tracy. Coming tonight, yeah, appreciate it. Okay, so that leads us into the next part of our discussion. We were going to discuss, um, the screening committee tonight. I know it's a little unorthodox from the timeline, but the process, uh, we, we kind of got underway and are looking to get things moving at least as, um, uh, perhaps establish the size of it tonight if we could. Establish, um, somewhat of what the makeup is and perhaps, uh, I'm hoping a couple of the members, uh, some, we have some school committee members, I think that might be interested as well. So just to start, I think, uh, we want to start size wise and hoping to keep to nine, but I think we may creep up at eleven once we start to, you know, line up, we're looking to have on it. So if we do go to two school committee members, um, that would be two. Uh, an administrator would be a third member, um, a student would be a fourth, uh, two unit As. Apps, which would be two teachers, um, professional and then, um.
Parent.
Parent, uh, and then, uh, a, a, a community member, two community members, yep.
Student.
We had a student.
Okay, sorry. I liked her suggestion to have two students because I do think it can be intimidating and might be helpful and maybe you could have like, like, think about like differentiating experiences or something like a student athlete. I, I don't know, whatever, but two, I think two students might be.
Okay.
I know it adds an extra member, but.
No, that's.
I wouldn't want to be the only student.
Yeah, understood. I mean, the only, I'm, I'm just wondering how many students would be interested?
May, maybe nobody else will pick it up, but.
Yeah.
So we're at eleven right now. Which is that?
Well, that would put us at twelve. I had three community members.
You had three community members, okay.
Were you community members but one parent?
I feel like we need a whiteboard. Can you say it again?
Right, yes, you got school committee members, um, one admin as three. Two students were a five, two unit members as seven, paraprofessionals eight, one parent as nine. And then two committee members, only two, um, community members brings us to eleven.
Eleven. Part of the thought, um, was to, we had multiple people, uh, interested in this school committee position. And so, um, perhaps their interest could carry over into offering positions on this committee. We did invite one here tonight, Katie's here tonight, um, and she's the PTO president in Maple Shade. And so, um, we thought that that might be appropriate, um, for a parent. Um, and then there was also another person who, um, actually got put up for the vote, uh, at that meeting as well, who is a former employee of the district. Um, and would have interest in joining the committee as well if we were up for that. So those would be, um, a couple of the members, I thought. The other person that I brought here tonight is Don Mackey. You, most of you know Don, uh, former director of LCAT. What I'm looking for or what I thought we would be looking for is a chairperson that could, you know, certainly be organized, certainly be invested in the district and have a knowledge of how this process all worked. Don has gone through the past process being here as long as he has. Um, and so he would be a thought that I had, uh, if we were, be willing to go as far as to, um, appoint a chair to this committee, just to get the process rolling. What I'm trying to do is to get this off of our table and to the screening committee and to say to the screening committee, bring three or four applicants forward that you believe any of which could be the superintendent of East Long Meadow. The administrators would look to pick one of their, uh, one of, one of themselves internally, unit A, the teachers. Uh, we have an agreement with them that they would pick their own numbers and send the names forward to us.
They can do that for unity.
And unity as well.
She also mentioned like secretarial or staff.
Yeah. So we could go further if you wanted to. The, I, and I don't know, it would be if we could find someone willing to do it. You know, unit A, there's a couple hundred members. Those other ones are.
Eighteen on each.
Which, not to say there wouldn't be.
We are going to try to have, um, Tracy, uh, scheduled in each building for a little bit of time to connect with custodians and food service and certainly can connect with, uh, secretaries. But doesn't put someone on the committee to the point you're making.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, I, I have spent some time in the schools, obviously, last year and I, in my own experience as well. Administrative support staff often keep the engine running and have a real perspective on a variety of issues, so, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it wouldn't hurt to try to have representation.
Yeah.
And some of them have been in the district for a long time.
So why don't we go to thirteen? Sorry, Tracy.
I think thirteen is a reasonable number, um, because I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the students.
Is that thirteen or fourteen?
That would bring, that would bring us to thirteen if we, if we added the.
Second student.
Well, the second student brings us to eleven. So.
Two more, yeah.
If you do, if you do the second, if you do the support staff of two, that was going to bring us to thirteen. I'm just curious, I'm just concerned about the students. Like, are we gonna, are we truly going to get two students that are willing to step up and be part of that? I was going to reach out to, so we have a, uh, school committee, uh, student advisory, which comes out of the officers, um, from the high school. So you have two seniors that, uh, starting next school committee meeting are your liaisons to the school committee. And then there are, uh, three underclassmen who I have not met yet. So out of that group, we could reach out and see if maybe your two seniors who are the liaisons will be willing to do it. Or you open it up, one of them does it and you open it up to others.
Another, yep, okay.
But I think Tracy is also meeting with the student council.
So can we, is, are we comfortable with that size and that makeup? And potentially, um, designating some, now, school committee members that are interested. Who, whom are interested in being on this, I'm not going to do it myself.
I was.
Yeah, so, yeah, obviously we can't have three because that would be.
You'll fire the superintendent.
Rock, paper, scissors, it?
We could wrestle for, no.
I don't know, how, how would we, uh?
I'm not sure.
How do we want to pick the two, do we want to think about that? Let's think about it. We'll have two members of the school committee, give it some thought, uh, and then by next meeting, we'll appoint the two.
Yes.
And we'll point the rest of the members. What about appointing, uh, those members that I already mentioned as possibles? Just to get the ball rolling.
I, I, I definitely agree with getting the ball rolling. I'm just, you know, I wonder if, I want to make sure we get the ball rolling in the right direction. I just met Don because he just, he, he helped me with, with, with another issue. I, I just know that, um, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying this is Springfield. Um, I know when there was a, there was a suggestion of appointing somebody, it turned into a debacle. Because the committee felt as if, the, the, the search committee felt as if they needed to be the ones to make the decision of vote upon their own chair.
I was thinking.
So the last two committees that we created, the building committees, both the pool building committee and the school committee, we did appoint the chairs. I agree with you on a lot of committees will appoint their own chair, but the reason why, um, was based on the specific person and the things that they brought to the table. It's worked both times prior, but I mean, if you prefer the committee pick their own chair, we could go that route too.
Anyone who is, and, and maybe this is the case, that was, uh, involved in the previous superintendent search.
Do we?
I think I'm the only one left. I was involved with the search last time, but yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, the good part was we have.
Actually, but he was.
We have an expert in a row.
He watched it as the, uh, LCAT director, yeah.
We, we have our expert, uh, what, what, what's your thoughts?
Um, in terms of appointing the chair? So the first thing I will say is please make sure that any appointments you make, like whoever it is already actually can make all the dates. Really be the first.
Right, and you said that, you mentioned that to me already, Tracy, I was getting there, yeah.
So we need to make sure people can actually make all the permits. I, I, I think that's one that's actually really about, because you're, you're kind of actually, um, parsing out what the two sides are, right? Which is, um, it is a way for the committee to exert a direction if they appoint the chair. Alternatively, if the committee wants to send a message that the search committee is kind of having this delegated to them and then they are to come back with a recommendation, it can be effective to say, and part of what I, we're delegating to you is for you to appoint your own chair. I think it's, the question is what message you want to send, because that's really what you're doing.
And I agree with you. I think that having, giving some direction and, you know, these are what we're looking for, I think does have a, a, a strong push. Um, to ensure that what we want comes out of the, the committee itself. And then they do more of the work, yes.
Yeah, right. Unless you're on it too, then you'll, you are they, right? Thoughts?
I think there's something to be said for the process of having the committee, you know, be autonomous and, you know, choose their own chair, but I also see the value in bringing in Don. I really see the value in, in that. And I think that that would be, um, I don't know anyone more unbiased than Don. Really, truly. Um, so I think, and I can, I can really say that and I, I know you're newer and everything, um, but I'm very comfortable. I would be, we take it for granted because we know him. But I think that that would be a great direction because I, I honestly don't know that there would be anyone else more, um, suited to do that role and more unbiased than him to do it.
Carrie, thoughts?
I don't, I'm okay with, with either. I think. I don't, I'm okay with, with either. I think, um, having been a part of the process, obviously, to elect, get elected into
Yeah.
school committee, I, I guess I'm sensitive to my colleagues who also ran and
Yeah.
I, I think if we're gonna extend the invitation, we should kind of extend the invitation and see who's interested in this. I, I don't, I don't know.
Yes.
It gets, then you have a couple of folks that are excluded from that process who I think were really interested in. And that's what sort of drove them to want to be a part.
So at least we can address part of that at least, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which was my thought as well. Yeah. People that are interested and have something to offer. Okay, so we're looking for thirteen members. We've na, listed them out. Um, the ones that we would look to name tonight are potentially the chair as Don Mackey. Um, we will wait for the school committee members and we'll put that on the next agenda. Uh, Katie Freeman and Kathy Hood, those would be the three that we would name, and then we would name the other ten later.
I'm comfortable with, with that.
Okay. Want to move it?
Sure. Um, how would I, how do you want me?
Move to create a, uh, I would entertain a motion to create a, um, the steering committee for the superintendent made up of thirteen members that we've, uh, previously discussed. Uh, and specifically, uh, Don Mackey is the chair and Kathy Hood and Katie Freeman as the three initial members.
So moved.
Which is made by Amy.
Second.
Second by William. Any other discussion?
Yes. Of those positions, where, which ones would they fill? Other positions that were, uh, which ones would they check off on?
One parent, two community.
One parent.
Uh, yeah, or former employee, yeah.
And two of the.
Oh, well, actually, two of them are former employees and one's a parent. So how are we gonna parse it?
So whatever way that works.
Okay.
And PTO too, that kind of does both of, you know.
Kind of cover a couple of different.
Katie does with parent and PTO.
Right.
So there's that.
Could move for, depending on if somebody else came in, it was strong and what, we could kind of move.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries four to zero. Thank you, we're on our way.
Wanna make a speed train then?
Thank you very much.
We just voted them back in very much. Do we now need to vote? Do we need to appoint the chair or do we?
Oh, we already did. We just did, yeah.
I'm good with it. Good job.
You're in, no.
You're in, that's it.
Okay. Thank you all for that discussion. Appreciate that. Tracy, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
A month or so, yeah.
Yes, back before, well, yeah, uh, I think the next time I'm actually is, would be remotely.
Okay. Excellent, yeah.
You'll be in town October seventh for a long.
Yeah.
Be chair all of those input sessions though, as you get them.
Great. Katie and Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we are moving forward. We have the FY fourth quarter report.
Yeah, so, uh, good evening, everyone. That's, uh, is a spreadsheet that is designed as a financial update for the FY twenty-five school department operating budget as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. We're all, I'm sure glad to see that year end, um. What I would like to say is looking at the budget spreadsheet on page five, uh, you will see that all the salary accounts on the top section of the budget, the budget page, um, salary accounts fluctuate throughout the fiscal year as staff changes occur. Uh, to remind everyone, in December, the school committee discussed the potential deficit that we were seeing on the expense side of the budget. Uh, therefore, in January, there was that transfer of four hundred ninety-six thousand eight ninety-two from the salary side of the budget to the expense side of the budget. The four ninety-six, eight ninety-two of teacher salaries were then reclassified to be charged to the school choice revolving account. The fiscal year ended with a balance on the salary side of a negative thirty-four, three, one, three. On the bottom section of the spreadsheet are your expense sides, which, um, as I stated, the four ninety-six, eight ninety-two that was transferred from the salary side to the expense side was applied to the added district tuition line item. The fiscal year ended with an available balance remaining on the expense side of thirty-four thousand three thirty-one. So at the very bottom of page five, you'll see, just as a reminder, our budget was thirty-five million nine nine five one two six. We expended thirty-five million five one five four eight three. Incumbered rolling over to be paid in this fiscal year was the four seven nine six two five. Would like to mention to the school committee that, um, of that, uh, encumbered amount there, two hundred and twenty-five thousand is a prepay for vocational tuition, which will help us with this FY twenty-six school year, okay? So in the end, the available balance, which was returned to the town's general fund, seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Are there any questions on the operating budget? The next page is your, um, the grants. Uh, the prior year grants, we had the S R three, which was that large grant back in two thousand twenty-two, the two million dollar grant. That ending amount there was just rolled over to finish up the final things for the playground that was done over at Meadowbrook, um, which we're very excited about. Uh, the IDEA grant in FY twenty-four, uh, we had a small amount rolling over. That was a specific for what, what they call equitable services, um, which are really like private schools. And we reach out to them, we have like a certain obligation. Um, I'm working with, uh, Jenny Sullivan, our student services director. We, we are not able to expend those, so we're working with Desi to try to be able to reallocate those back to our district. Um, but again, hopefully you'll see that expended, um, this upcoming year. Uh, then we have our federal grants, the Title One, uh, Title Two, Title Four, IDEA, the Early Childhood Grant, and the Special Ed Program Improvement. You're gonna see small balances here that were rolled over into FY twenty-six. Uh, most of those were actually expended during the summer, and you'll see that reflected, um, when I do the FY twenty-six, um, financial. Then you have your state grants. Um, the only one that was carried over there was the MEKO grant, and that was because we had very unique circumstances where we lost our social worker, uh, for the MEKO program. Um, so that put, uh, quite a different spin on things for the district. So that, uh, money was reallocated into, um, FY twenty-six, um, to be expended, I think, for professional development for, uh, to help the district. And, um, the last one was just as a reminder, that Klee ELAP grant, um, that we had, that grant was terminated by the federal government on, uh, February tenth. So that remaining amount will go back and we will, you know, not receive that. Are there any questions on any of the grants?
No. The fifty-seven sixty-four is going back, is it okay?
Yeah, actually, the way it, I don't think we ever received it. Am I saying that correct?
But they just got it reinstated and are going to send it to us, right?
Thirty, is that the same one?
Yeah.
Okay, can you explain that, Heather? Was that like thirty-five hundred of that?
Something like that. So they've been going back and forth with legal battles and, and they were able to get back majority of it. So we've already expended it to give to, uh, stipends based on our partnership, so we will get that back.
Thank you. Okay. The last page are the revolving accounts, um. Just as a reminder, these revolving accounts go from one year to the next year. Um, so the athletic revolving account ended with sixteen thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars. The athletic stadium rental, seven dollars. Uh, school rental and miscellaneous accounts, two hundred sixteen thousand eleven dollars. The mobile technology, the student mobile technology, uh, insurance program is thirty-one thousand eight twenty-six. The staff mobile technology repairs is just two hundred and three dollars. I'll be working with the Unit A there. They usually, um, write us a fifteen hundred dollar check to reimburse that. The school gift accounts, a, a total of fifty-one thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. Uh, the tuition revolving account, two hundred forty-four thousand ninety-three dollars. Uh, just as a reminder, we do have positions, um, that are, uh, paid from this revolving account, and that's part of our budget process. I believe we have, um, one teacher and two paras.
Tuition revolving, just so everyone knows, uh, is predominantly now coming through the preschool, the peer role models. They pay, uh, tuition to come into the preschool. Uh, there was at one time, um, uh, we had, uh, a district tuition in, into our, um, autism spectrum, uh, disorder program. And that student has since, uh, left.
Right, it's been quite a number of years, yeah.
How are the numbers for that this year in terms of preschool?
Well, I know Renee was having some difficulty with the, um, the, yeah, exactly.
It appears.
The, right, getting the, the kids that just come in for half days, because, you know.
Don't we have more full day slots now?
Yes.
Yeah, all the full day slots.
I believe they're all, I believe they're all.
Some half days still empty.
Mm-hmm, I believe that that's the way it is. I'll try to get a better update for you at the first quarter of the next year. Um, then we have the circuit breaker account. Um, I am happy to say that we're rolling over eight hundred and forty-one thousand. Um, if we go back a few months ago, I thought it was going to be more like three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm very happy, um, to hear that, um, or to be able to tell you about that. Uh, the transportation revolving account, one hundred thirty-seven thousand one seven five. Just as a reminder, that's the fee that, uh, folks pay for the trans, transportation. So when you see the one hundred thirty-seven thousand, most of that was collected in, in June, so that's why you see those revenues here. It will help us offset FY twenty-six when I, you know, do a purchase order for a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to defray the expenses.
Because it is for FY twenty-six, that's the money, right?
Yes, but that's why it shows at the end of.
Came in before the end of fiscal year, yeah.
Uh, the school lunch account, um, eight hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. Um, I did talk to Lori Paul. She's currently working on new food service lines for, um, I believe Maple Shade. And the next one is, uh, Meadowbrook. Each of those are at like a fifty to sixty thousand dollar, um, expenditure. So again, I'll work with Lori on, on, um, her list of, of, um, those projects that are, you know, to be done in the near future so that you can stay on top of that. And lastly, the school choice, uh, we're rolling over three hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars, which was just about where we had, I had projected that we would be to roll over. And as a reminder, um, that school choice, uh, revenue is funding the supplies for the schools in FY twenty-six. So that's a, a critical number there.
And all the FY twenty-five monies are now in for that, for school choice.
As of June thirtieth.
Break it up, okay, yep.
Right, okay. Thank you. If there's any other questions.
Questions on the numbers? Okay. Uh, we usually accept that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can take, uh, someone to move to accept the fourth quarter report, please.
Yeah, move.
Made by William.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries four to zero.
Great, thank you.
Okay, up next, we have grants for approval as well.
So these are the twenty-five, twenty-six current years, um, entitlement grants that the district receives each year. Um, we have the Title One. I, I gave you a listing of where we were at last year and where we're at this, this year, the FY twenty-six, so you could see kind of the differences there. We had a lot of talk, um, a few months back, and we weren't sure with the federal grants on what the district was actually going to get. I'm pleased to say that, um, Heather oversees the Title One, Two, and, and Four grant, and it's, it's, um, a collective one application. And so she can, um, I don't know if I'm saying this right, Heather, she can flex funds from one of those grants to the other grants. So when you see like that the Title One is fifty-nine thousand five hundred higher than it was last year, that's because some of the funds were flexed from one of the other grants. I hope that makes.
And the thinking behind that is that with the curriculum renewal line not being renewed this year, um, that we can kind of boost some of that high quality instructional material spending through Title One. So we shifted a lot to the supply line.
And combined, uh, collectively, that's a, between those three, because it is that one application. It is an increase of fifty thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars. So that was a nice surprise because again, we weren't sure what was going to happen with the federal grants. Um, then we have.
I just have, yeah, sure. Just so everybody understands, so last year, as we were looking at a deficit, uh, we were, we looked first internally before we went to unfortunately, um, reducing positions. And so, uh, we froze the curriculum renewal line item, which is, uh, traditionally eighty thousand dollars. So as, uh, the different departments come up, uh, through a five-year cycle and they get to, they've done their study and they get to a, a time of purchasing, uh, then no department gets the full eighty thousand. But generally, if it's two larger departments, we try to, uh, have maybe forty thousand each. Or if it's three departments, then we split it, uh, as equitably as we can. That was frozen so that it could be used in areas of the budget.
Um, the next grants are your, um, Special Ed Early Childhood Grant and the IDEA, which stands for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Grant. Um, you will see that there's a little over ten thousand that we are down from last year to, to this year. Um, so those are your federal grants. And then we have the state grants, which, which is your MEKO grant, uh, which is up about six thousand dollars, so that's good. Then they had us, um, they're calling it a MEKO B grant. Typically, typically, Desi, when I roll over a grant, it's not a new fund in munis. It just kind of carries over, it's the same grant, but they, they put closure to the other one and are calling this MEKO B, but it really is the FY twenty-five rollover grant. So therefore, I didn't include it in the bottom for the, uh, for the grant total, like on an increase or decrease, because it was the, the money from last year. Um, and then there's your comprehensive school health services grant, um, and that is down eight thousand dollars. So again, I just need to always bring these forward to the, uh, school committee so you can accept, officially accept these, uh, entitlement grants. Any questions on them?
How are those differences gonna affect budget? Nothing major, right?
There's nothing major here. We kind of weren't expecting, you know, like, like I said, some of these were a bit of a surprise, so that's, that's good.
So the MEKO grant actually is gonna allow us to continue to do some of our professional development around, um, diversity and social emotional learning, uh, which is exciting because, uh, a lot of our professional development money was reduced in order to cover deficit.
Okay. Uh, Samantha, just a technical thing, is there a way when the pages are landscaped?
Rotate.
I know, in mine, I can, and I don't.
To download it first?
I know, that's what. Can you just put it all in straight, though?
It, it's hard because you.
You can't turn that one scan?
Yeah.
I don't get them all scanned to me.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can try to see if there's a way I can do it, but.
When she scans the packet, though, it's all going one way. So she's going, hey, it's gonna.
I should just download it. I'll just download.
You're rethinking paperless now?
No, I just go on, I just turn my head every time like this.
We'll see you doing this.
I'm that guy, yeah, right? Sheesh. Okay.
We can get your paper copy.
Touche. Touche. Any other questions on the grants? Then, uh, I would look for someone to move to accept these.
Accept the grants.
Motion made by Carrie. Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries four to zero.
Great, thank you.
We have the East Alamo Public Schools invited into Desi High Dosage Literacy Tutoring Program.
Are you able to present, or do you want?
No, I was gonna let you present, but I was gonna just give you a, a little bit of a plug. Um, so the Brown, uh, was able to put in an application for East Alamo Public Schools to a competitive situation regarding, um, high dosage literacy tutoring, which will, uh, benefit our first graders. And, um, I'll let her go through, uh, some of the details of the, uh, not only the, application process, but also what it will bring to the LPS for this year, which is exciting.
Can I have sharing rights now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what you were asking me?
I appreciate the.
Just had to ask.
I was giving you a plug.
I appreciate it.
All yours.
Awesome, thank you. Six nine four. So, yeah, it's very exciting. Um, basically, you were able to, uh, apply for this if you was, were able to show that you were using how they define high quality instructional materials for early literacy, evidence-based literacy instruction, their early literacy screeners, and commitment to equity. So we met all of those things and, um, we got some good, uh, press, a couple of different news. Um, but basically, we were, um, out of two hundred and seventy-two schools awarded, and these are the folks in our area. So, um, it's, it was pretty competitive. So it's very exciting because, um, first of all, high doses tutoring has shown to be really, really powerful. And what the kids are going to have is an opportunity to have one-on-one tutoring. Um, Desi has, um, worked with Amplify Tutoring, which is vetted and, you know, has great results. And basically, kids who will get, who are identified, I'll talk about that in a minute, thirty minutes of one-to-one, uh, literacy tutoring, uh, a week. Um, and what this does is it frees up the, the three reading interventionists that we have. Um, and what this does is it frees up the, the three reading interventionists that we have there um, to focus on other kids. So we can now service even more kids because we got thirty one slots. Um, and they work with us to schedule that so that it works out at a good time and all, you know, all the logistical pieces are coming together. Um, but basically our, we're getting, uh, one-to-one tutoring for thirty one kids in two twelve-week cycles, so we meet with them, we look at data. Uh, they really pinpoint what kids need to work on and we look at progress and decide who's going to exit if, if they do or who qualifies to come in. So there'll be two, uh, cycles where they'll get that one-to-one tutoring. Um, that's it.
This is a company amplify?
So Desi has, um, I'm missing the word.
Got it.
Contracted, thank you, um, with different, um, providers and Amplify is the one that we got. And they want us, I didn't say this earlier, they want us to focus on the neediest first graders because that, you get a lot of bang for your buck when you work with first graders. Um, so that will allow the interventionists to work with other first graders who might not be as needy, second graders and kindergartener students, um, as we see fit. So it's really basically increasing our ability to give that, um, double dose of intervention for all of our kids for literacy.
Do currently the interventionists meet one-on-one or small groups?
In small groups.
In person, this will be virtual?
Yes.
Uh, what are your thoughts on that?
It's going to happen either in one or two ways. There is a small group time, um, that Renee at Meadowbrook was able to work into the schedule. So basically the foundational program that they use, foundations, works a lot on, um, encoding and decoding, but there's not a lot of time for practice of decode, of the decoding. So they're working with the, the coach to have small group time where kids can work with teachers and really work on that automaticity and, and accuracy. During that time, we can get kids on the computers, um, because teachers will already be working with small groups. So in that model, it takes a load off of teachers because they'll be planning for certain kids, but the kids who are getting one-to-one tutoring will have that time. Another model we're looking at is, um, having the kids, when they have this time, uh, go to one place, working with the, the literacy coach monitoring, um, and it would happen um, outside during that flex block, but not in the classroom. So they're still debating, they're trying to not overwhelm teachers with logistical stuff. We want this to be a support, um, so they're working out the two different models. But the kids will not miss any instruction, it would happen when they would normally get that, that double dose time.
So I know where, where we're at, twenty twenty five, it's here. Are we concerned about giving up, um, face-to-face time with virtual time to an organization other than our own staff?
I, I think yes, because we do not have the staffing to do one-on-one. And that's really powerful, the kid gets that person thirty minutes a day, three times a week, thirty, three times a week. They know them, they know exactly what they need. Um, you, you know, sometimes when we put kids in groups, they don't all necessarily have the same needs, it's based on logistics.
And this is data driven.
Correct.
And you're going to be monitoring the data.
Right.
So there's evidence to support this, this, uh, that practice.
Yeah.
Will benefit the students.
Yeah.
The virtual tutoring, you mean?
And we also work through, if, if kiddos aren't, you know, succeeding with this model, we have different things and we are have, reach out to parents. So there's all sorts of things in place, including the data monitoring, just the qualitative data of how's a kid actually responding to this that we can work through.
I just start to get concerned that we are starting to outsource our education services somewhere else and mostly because AI is coming as well and so.
Thankfully, these are real human beings trained.
No, but is this the first step now that we start putting students virtual during the school day outside?
The opposite would be that we would have the tutors meet with them one-on-one if Desi allowed that, but I just think it's just not, it's not cost-effective. Um, right.
Amplify, yeah.
Well, and Desi's paying for all of this, yeah. Um, so Desi, you know, uh, has contracted with different folks, so.
What happens if Desi says next, here we will pay for the, you know, an hour for every student per day to go virtual school? You know, that's all I'm saying, are we heading in that direction?
Really don't have the funding for that. I think this is to get the kids that need that extra boost, the extra boost.
Yeah.
Because we're giving that high quality instruction during the tier one period, but some kids need that extra support and we do offer that, but when we had to, you know, make hard choices last year and, you know, switch things, bring things around with the reading interventionist, this kind of comes in as a perfect timing in terms of one more way to support our kids.
Because the alternative would be that students were not going to get the support.
Or they would get support in bigger groups.
Larger groups, where it wasn't necessarily meeting them at the level that they are at.
Right, and when we do the best we can within the construct.
Interventionists wouldn't have been able to meet as many students as we're going to be able to meet now.
Yeah.
Because the interventionists are still here and we're able to then pick up additional students where, without this tutoring support. But I don't think Desi's going down the road of, um, supplanting in-person teaching, they're still getting the direct instruction in the classroom and this is an addition.
And they're getting actual, there's an actual person at the other end.
Yes.
This is not a bobblehead, this is.
No, 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 this is not AI, this is a real person who, and they'll be paired with the same person.
Yeah.
Time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And.
It's just not yet though, that's what I'm saying, William, this is not yet, but is this the first step? Because then AI comes three years later as teaching our children.
And the only thing I would add, um, is, you know, most people know, we, we, we understand, AI has been here for the last five, six years, they just have, they've just been hiding behind other programs like Grammarly and, and Spell Tech, they've been here, they just now are just saying we're here.
But you have to admit, it's, it's multiplying exponentially, I would say, in the last two years, three years, exponential.
I would, I would absolutely.
Three years from now.
Uh-huh. I would absolutely, but, but, you know, I would, I would only add that I'm not blind. Um, my, my mother used to say if I sit too close to the TV, I would, I would lose my sight and I'm still here. So I think we all are looking at the, we're, we're always looking at it from the, the, that lens and of how we see it and it's, there are so many kids that are using the technology, um, and probably using it better. Um, you know, I've got grandkids that are one, two years old and can utilize a tablet to the point where I'm ready just to hand it to them and say, can you fix it for me?
Mm-hmm.
But it's just their world and I think, but I agree with you, we don't want to just hand, we don't want to just hand it over to them and say, go, you know, AI, go teach our kids.
Not at all, no.
I think in an ideal world, you would have funding to have in-person.
Yeah.
Being support for all the students that would need it, but it seems as though we're in a space where we have been able to get some grant money, where we can provide support where we might otherwise not have been able to and.
And I've had some fantastic meetings where I've been in actually three different states in one, you know, in, in one day. Just because of that, because of the, that's why I asked, is there actually going to be a person at the other end? Because I think that's the important part, somebody.
And you bring up a good point, because we have personalized learning programs that can be very beneficial that kids would be on if they weren't meeting with a teacher, because if a teacher's trying to meet with a small group, they can only do so much, so kids are often at the personalized learning, which is at their level, that that's not a person. So this is actually an improvement over.
Right.
You know, they're getting a real live-trained reading specialist helping them.
And we'll be monitoring the data on our end.
Of course.
There's communication between Amplify and our team in terms of what's happening in those sessions.
Right.
You're going to have access to that data, being able to look at it.
In fact, it's a requirement that we have data meetings and we all sit together with the literacy coach and so.
Right, so what if the data is, is fantastic, right? And we find that we should be teaching our, teaching all our students virtually, you know, that's, that's all I'm concerned.
Sure, if it's the virtual piece or that one-on-one.
I was just.
Okay, the one-on-one is.
To find is that the one-on-one is the ideal.
One-on-one.
You don't have the funding and staff to, to do that, am I correct? And so like this is the way that we're doing it and, and maybe we'll have that at some point and we wouldn't need that, but.
But I agree with you that, that, that in-person, that, that being in a classroom, being, being able to see your gestures and your, you know, I can't see that I ask a question and maybe your hands are kind of, which tells me you may, may not have guided it. Um, so I, I agree with you, there's parts of that, we want to have the hands-on piece.
You know, I think of the students as they went through COVID and as they were virtual and.
And thank God, it's not quite like that, because you're not a teacher trying to teach all of these kids at the same time virtually and then the hybrid came about and you've got kids in front of you.
Yeah.
Like what a nightmare, this is one-on-one, you know?
I think this is going to have a lot of benefits to it, um, I think, uh, you know, everyone's concerns are valid, it would be wonderful if they could send, you know, teachers and.
Thirty one tutors?
Absolutely, wouldn't that be?
That'd be great.
Um, but hopefully the data that comes out of this is going to be really positive and it seemed, it seems like it probably will be. And again, the goal isn't to have the students, like from what I'm hearing you say and from what I know about, you know, teaching, reading, you don't want students in this program like all year.
No.
Is this supposed to be a short-term bolster?
Yes.
To get those first graders, because that's such a critical year to get them up to grade level. So I think especially in, you know, framing it that way, this can be, this could be really helpful.
A little positive.
Like positive.
So it's for, um, twelve weeks?
Then we reassess.
Okay.
If a, if a kiddo has made the progress that they need, or if there are other kids who need it more, yeah, we look at that. And that's actually how we run our interventions too. We're constantly in progress monitoring and seeing how kids are doing, because you don't, if they don't need that double dose, then they could be doing something else.
Yeah. Um, what do you need for us for this, are we, do we have to approve something?
Doesn't hurt to approve it.
Yeah, sure.
As we're, we're invited in.
You know, since it was in the news that we should probably tell you, but it got to.
Yeah, no.
And then they put it in the news the same day and, yeah.
We're not receiving grant funding, but they obviously have grant funding to make this happen and so we got invited into their program.
Thanks.
Maybe accept the report.
Deciding, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're already in the program, right?
We are.
We don't have to accept anything, I don't think, yeah, I think we're.
Give us your blessing.
Our, our.
Yes, congratulations.
That's you.
Yes.
Works as well.
That happens a few spaces down.
Okay, with that, we have come to the conclusion of our meeting, if there's, uh, nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by William.
Second.
Second by Amy. Jamie, thank you for being here tonight.